So just to preface this a little bit.
And I'll turn my mic on. You know, the Loop Authority made a presentation two weeks ago. We had, from that presentation, we had a lot of questions. And so we, as the authority, we've put together some answers for this. But just to let you know, some of the answers to the questions, we haven't formulated yet. We're still working on that. We've got engineers working on that and stuff like that. So some of these are going to be answers that are going to continue. And we're going to give them to you in the future.
Okay. And in the interest of time, I would like us to be able to go through the questions and your responses to them. And we won't interrupt for the time being, just write down any follow-up questions that you may have. So we can blast through this.
Yeah, while we're trying to with questions. Let me begin about questions that asked like Mr. Flammen had expressed, there are certain things here that we just don't know. They're being processed, they're being looked at. We have a study going on right now. We have a study going on right now. What? Yeah. All right. But anyway, I'll talk while I try to do this. So the Town of Monument pursued this from quite a while ago. Since I've been here, we've had multiple options that look at to try to recoup our reuse flows. And we've had studies done over the years, both through the county and through us. And we even had a plan at one time where Town of Monument Woodmore were looking at building their their individual reuse system. And those all were good ideas at the start, but they didn't get a lot of traction mainly because of the costs involved. The systems that we're doing now, we're looking at is the Loop system. And I know Jesse spent a lot of time at the last meeting with that. And what we're going to do here is just about there. All right, so the towns portion of this really comes from, we have the smallest amount of reuse flows to recuperate. But we also have a lot more at stake here with trying to trying to stay involved with this plan. And there was a time when we did, we had a regional group put together, Tribe View was included on that. And we were all in it. And then there were issues that came up when CSU changed, I don't want to say changed the rules, but they had things that came up that the rest of us weren't necessarily in agreement with. And so the whole Loop project started coming around as a viable alternative to that. And what we tried to do is stay with one foot in both camps, which is what Mike has kind of been directing us to do. And then let the board of the council now determine how far we're going to go with this until we can make a decision. And so that's kind of where we're at on the big picture right now. Is trying to go down both paths and see where that takes us. Town of Monuments, again, the reuse flows that we're talking about are not as large as others, but we want to make sure that we have the right system lined up for what we're trying to pursue. And there were several questions that came up on Council of the authorities. The first one I wanted to address was the question about the why we don't have Water Council present. And I have an answer for that. What we've been doing in the past is when we have a topic on the agenda that relates to water, that would make sense for a Water Council to answer those questions, then we would have Mr. Bob Crossa here, who's our Water Council. And at the same time, we have a town attorney sitting in and they could also weigh in on it. But the reality is, we don't have a lot of water type issues that would require legal advice. We have issues that come up, but they're pretty, pretty ordinary. They're approving projects based on water demand, whether we have the ability to supply will serve letters, so on and so forth. We do have a line item in our budget for that type of event if needed. And we do do a lot of work behind the scenes with Water Council. And we just feel at the time, and I say we, it's really me, because I haven't showed Mike some of these answers yet, is that if we definitely felt there was a need to bring council in and talk to you, whether it's an executive session, open session, I'm sure Mike.
We take direction from the council as a whole. And so if the council felt like that they needed to have Water Council here, we'd definitely make sure that they were here. Yep. Definitely.
Yes. Like I said, we just wanted to to make sure you understood that the option is there. We do have the funding for it if needed. And if you, if the council requires us to do that, we can definitely provide that option.
It's fairly expensive to have them here every meeting. And as you know, most of our meetings are planning directed or, you know, may have to deal with the police department, a lot of subject matters. And water typically isn't highlighted on our agenda. If it is, we bring Bob Crossa or we bring one of our outside engineers or somebody like that that can help us with that. But anytime that you feel like that you need to have an answer from him, we can get him on the phone, contact me, and we can get you that answer. Definitely.
Some of the other questions you asked about the IGA with the Loop Authority. And there is agreements between the different entities as we form the Loop Authority. But those were reviewed by council and basically this is more or less the first step. We still have to work on things like bylaws and so on and so forth. The
And the Loop Authority has its own attorney too. We use, Jesse helped me on. Russ Doxtrow. Yeah, we have Russ Doxtrow working on that.
Yeah, and he's an attorney that has a tremendous amount of experience with the, what they call the Wise Authority up in Denver, which is a very similar like project where multiple entities got together to form this group to form a reuse type project. The, let's see, again, just going through these questions.
You watch the New York Mets, always want to call him Lenny Doxtrow.
A lot of these questions Jesse and our group here from Woodmore was able to answer. Can there are a lot of details associated with it. That's why I thought making copies for all of you to look at in just a second. Otherwise, we would be here well past the one hour mark. The talks about lease agreements in here. How everything was put together. There's a lot of information in here about the quantities of water involved and how each entity would be on the hook for their portion. It's going to be based on demand. How much, how much water are you planning on putting into the system versus how much are you pulling out? There was a question in here about about leasing water. I know you expressed your feelings and your questions about that. I respectfully disagree with a lot of that only because I've been through this, I've lived through it. And leasing for this type of system has a lot of merits to it. The amount of water that could be in this system, I think we're planning on about 6 million gallon as a, as a capacity for the system. If there are opportunities where someone is a little short or needs more water than than they have, then it would be the Loop Authority that would lease that water, not an individual entity. And there's language in here in answering somebody's questions that basically states, states the same thing. The other things I want to touch on real quick.
And we can email all this to you too. So we'll make sure that we get all of this email to the entire council.
You'll see a lot of these answers that are red or from Jesse, answers that are in blue were from me. And let's see. Did we want to go through more of the slides on this? Continue where we left off? Or we probably, I think you covered most of the last.
Yeah, we did. We just got cut short.
Okay.
Someone answered questions.
So you want to not answer the questions and just send the answers back an email and continue where Jesse left off at the last meeting? Is that what you'd like to do? Because I was under the
Okay.
All right. I mean, I don't have the questions and the answers in front of me, but.
Yeah, I do. I'm just trying to make sure they're not missing any pages here. When you print out nine or 10 pages per every dull moment.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let me pass out what I have and let's see. Didn't miss anything. If you have an extra page, let me know. Make sure this page is right. Again, it's a lot of, it's a lot of reading. It might take you a while to go through every answer. But again, I'm just trying to get to the ones that I thought were pretty significant. Let's see, we answered that. Again, a lot of these ones that weren't answered, most likely are due because we just don't know yet. There are things that will come out as we get further into the into the operational study that's going on. But again, there's reference in here about agreements, about renewable water plans. Just so you know that the Town of Monument has some renewable water, but right now, most of it that we have is located, what they call a Beaver Creek service rights and those, for the most part, we use to exchange to keep our lake full. And that's mainly during the summer. We do have some water rights about 100 miles west of here. But we've never been able to really utilize them. They're a small quantity. And I'm talking like two and a half acre feet, town purchased probably 15 years ago. Pretty senior rights on Twin Lakes. But we just don't, never have had the ability to to pull those out, to put them to use. I think we'd need a lot more of that water in order to get a beneficial use out of it. So that really our interest in the Loop is more geared towards recouping our reuse water. Does everybody understand the whole term? You hear that term a lot. It's really all the indoor plumbing that the town that people use and it goes down to the wastewater plant. It gets processed into a standard slightly above what the stream is at, what's in the native flows in the stream. And then it goes down, down river or downstream, ends up in the Fountain Creek and eventually ends up in the Arkansas. And the state allows you to utilize that water to extinction if you can find a use for it. And so part of the concept is here, we have quite a bit of water. Bruce Lidle, who's one of our consultants, was finalizing some numbers on that. And I think by our estimate, we're probably looking at about 46% roughly of our groundwater wells that return to the creek, the creek, the stream. And what that really means is that's water that we, if we can grab and process back into drinking water, we can reuse that water to extinction. And there's a multiplying effect that Jesse sometimes refers to is that every time that happens, you get a little bit of an increase that happens with that water. And just to give an idea, what that really means to us is when we look at replacing that amount of water, that would allow us at different times of the year to potentially shut down our groundwater wells or at least reduce so that we're not having to run everything we have to keep up with demand. We could, we could potentially run maybe three instead of six or seven or eight wells. And then take water from the Loop project to replace the water that we normally have to produce. The that's what makes it so appealing to us is the ability to get that water back. And and put it to good use, especially when we have a, when we have a high demand. It's not meant to replace all your wells. It's not entirely a surface water renewable system. But it's a, it's a good idea for us to recoup the water that right now we can't take advantage of. Right now it goes downstream for whoever to grab it. And we just don't have the ability to, to take that water other than to sell it in the quantities that we have or lease it to someone downstream. The I think what else I had here. The talk about yields. Again, with reuse water, we're not so much into the kind of systems that Woodmore has and Denala, because they have much more valuable rights downstream to contribute. The one of the things I did confirm right before this meeting is that Jim McGrady and Jenny Bishop will be here the first meeting in April to do a presentation on MDS. Jenny Bishop is a CSU engineer, Colorado Springs Utilities. So she'll be here to just listen and take questions. Jim McGrady will be the main presenter for that system. And they'll also be at the point where you can ask them questions. And so you can get a good idea of the differences between what, we call it NDS, a truly northern delivery system. And that's the Tribe View's system of tying into the Colorado Springs Utilities tank up at 83 North Gate. And CSU has a TAT fee associated with that. And there are other things that will probably come out during the MDS presentation as far as details, what restrictions are, what you can and can't do, which limits are. But I'm not versed enough in that, in the details of that to, to give it a good presentation.
And I think some of the key points about where we're at in the process are, you know, a lot of you are new on the board and we've been working on this now for, or on the council. We've been working on this now. I've been here almost five years. I think the day I walked in, I started working on this. Jesse, how long is the, and Tom, how long's the town been working on this? Probably 10 years? Yep. Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's been a lot of iterations of this. We just formed the Loop and the main function of us forming the Loop was to garner the $4 million that we applied for from ARPA through the county. And so we received that $4 million grant. Now we need to spend that money to study the Loop project, you know, to see if, is it viable for the Town of Monument? But at the same time, you know, we, me and Jesse, believe it or not, we just met with CSU last, what it was the last week or the week before we had lunch? Yeah, last week. So we had lunch with, and so we're continually, continually looking at that too. We haven't presented the council anything to say we're going either route, you know, and nor do we want you making that decision yet. We want to be able to show you a fair process on both sides and look at both sides completely before we ask you to make a decision. We just have this opportunity to use $4 million of somebody else's money to make sure that we make the right decision in the future for the Town of Monument. So just want to let you know that.
A couple more things I wanted to hit on based on the questions that were asked of us. Emergency interconnects. Town of Monument currently has an emergency interconnect with the Forest Lakes Metro District. That was done, I think, about mid, mid to late last year. That was based upon their situation more than ours, but still the pipe, the water net pipe could go either way. It's designed to have a bypass around PRVs and pounding on system pressures was designed to do that. The, there was a study done. I was trying to find that before I left here. I couldn't figure out what, what year it was done. And I'm guessing about five to seven years ago, we had a study done while the potential future interconnects the town could do. And I think there was five entities that we looked at in Woodmore, Denala, Colorado Springs Utilities, I think even Palmer Lake was in the list. What to project that pass would look like and what's the estimated costs were back then. And I believe, if my memory is certainly right, the cheapest connection we had was with Woodmore. And it was in a neighborhood of about just under 800,000 back then. Because it was the shortest length of pipe. It's, no matter how you look at it, with exception of Palmer Lake, we were looking at crossing into the interstate.
And now the Tribe View has crossed onto the interstate and is providing connexus with water. We have the opportunity to be able to tie into that. That's all going to be dependent on, you know, we met with Jenny about changing the 1041 permit. And like I said, we had met with Jim Romanello and some representatives from Pueblo. She says that it may be a possibility for us to continue working on that and to make a change in their 1041 permit or either to have some other options to where we could take it on the other side of the divide. So we're still working on that. But if we were going to do an interconnect today, it probably would be really nice to do it at Denver, Old Denver Road.
Yeah. So we have that out there as something to consider. Of course, we'd have to get updates on prices and locations and how that would, how that would look. A lot of times, problems with interconnects have to do with the elevation that we're currently at and which way the water is going to flow based on pressure. If not, then you have to install pumps in order to overcome the pressures, send it back if someone had needed it, for example. All emergency interconnects are usually done through IGAs that the council would approve. And IGAs are what detail the, the procedure on how that would happen. So a lot of times, everybody has a default sentence in there that says, if you ask for water from us, we have to assess where our current system is before we commit to giving you the water. And that's so that you don't, you know, rob from your own system, but you're in a detriment to what's out there. There was some talk, and again, the questions in here about the dividing line between Division One, Division Two. That for us occurs at the top of Monument Hill where the geographic region is. Our tank, I think the divide is physically about 10 to 15 feet north of our current tank. So any development north of that tank would really fall into Division Two, which is the Platte River Basin. And so the concern has always been, well, how do you send water from here to there? And is there a way to get that water back? Because if there isn't, then basically you're taking water from one division to another. And nobody, nobody that, that makes those bigger decisions is really going to be supportive of that. The, but like, like Mike was saying, the there may be an opportunity, again, that was just a couple of meetings we had with Colorado Springs Utilities. And to see whether that will pan out in the future.
And really, the only thing that we're missing, because we're able to take the water over the divide, Monument Sanitation is able to bring it back, all but the irrigation. And so the exchange would be, how much irrigation are they using on the other side? And how much exchange do we have to be?
So can I ask one question about that?
Sure.
So right now, currently though, without any future expansion of the town limits north, there, there isn't, that, that scenario doesn't exist currently though, right?
Yeah. Currently, we have nothing developed north of our water tank. And so if the divide is 15 feet, 15 feet from our water tank and we have no development, then no, that wouldn't affect us currently, but it wouldn't allow us to develop in the future either.
Okay. Thanks.
So again, again, that's a possibility that may happen. We've had a few meetings with various people and also the Colorado Springs about that potential 1041 permit. Whether it would be allowed, what kind of special ranges would, would need to be made if that was to come to fruition. The, one of the other questions that came up was to talk about ASR. The town did look at ASR again, quite a few years ago. And for those of you that aren't quite familiar with that, what that means is aquifer storage recovery. It's where basically you take your water and you dechlorinate it and you pump it back in the ground to the aquifer. So a lot of times the question against Denala here, I think has had some experience with that. Sometimes the, the question I always had when I heard about it was, well, if you put it back in the aquifer, doesn't it just mix into the whole aquifer and you never see it again and all that? But I've been told that when you do ASR, that there's a difference, I guess, with the density or something, that when you pump it back in the ground, it doesn't move. Wrong, but anyway, ASR is the idea of putting water back into the, to the aquifer in that location to treat it basically like, like a reservoir that you could pull upon in the future. Not a lot of systems that I know of that do it. I know, for example, that Denala's looked into it. I don't know if they have an operating ASR system. But Jeff can speak to that. But we did look at it. We just didn't at that time think of it as a viable alternative only because of the costs involved. And I think we were probably looking to see other systems that, that use that type of system. And maybe take a look and see, is that a viable option for us in addition to reuse recovery and other things we're pursuing? So that answers part of that question. I'd say we haven't pursued it in the past. I just think now it's been a few years. We would have to revisit that and see the cost involved and the timing and whether that's really a viable alternative for us or not. Don't think of too many more questions other than the detailed ones that Jesse answered.
Are there any questions that you specifically would like him or Jesse or Jeff?
The, Billy, I kind of looked at the renewable water thing. I think as a council, I want us to dig into that more. I respectfully disagree with some of the comments in there. It's not easy, but it's not impossible. It's not hard to purchase renewable water. First, obviously, you know, we have to figure out how much we, how much we really need at build out. And because you typically, the way I understand it, don't, if you need 1,000 acre feet, you don't want to buy 100 acre feet. Because we have to operate our wealth anyways. Because you don't want to let those just sit there. That's going to become a very expensive waste of money. So you still have to operate the wells. So if you need 1,000 acre feet or around number, you probably want to get 700, 800 acre feet. As far as converting from agriculture to
Municipal use.
Municipal use. Again, it's, it's not easy, but it's not impossible. Other entities have done it. So I but that's something that I would like for the council to, to discuss it with with town staff. And, and then if we decide as a council that we want to purchase renewable water rights. and then if we decide as a council that we want to purchase renewable water rights, um, which I personally professionally think that we should. That's where Water Council comes in to, to go, we put them on the hunt, uh, to find X, um, hundred acre feet of, of water. I understand, um, the, the, the comments there of water security and, and where it's located and whatnot. So every entity that has purchased, that has purchased renewable water, come through that, that, that process. And it's, it's a process that I think you're going to have to go through as a council.
Oh, sorry. Um, that we're going to have to go through as a council. Um, because I, I think it, it, it's at least worth a discussion. Probably an executive. Maybe at the beginning we do it as a, um, in, in open session, but at some point we're probably going to have to switch to executive to, to discuss the, the ins and outs, but that, that's the only, I, I would say the, the, the comment I would, I would want to make at this point.
And, and just to continue with that, we constantly have Bob Crossa looking for water rights. And what we found so far have been so far away that we can't get them here. Uh, I think part of the reason why we're doing NDS and why we're looking at Loop is because other entities have purchased water rights that are so far south. There's no way to get them here other than NDS through the SDS or through the Loop system. And so we and former councils and, and boards have made decisions based on that, that they didn't want to be tying up money into purchasing water rights that we couldn't get to the town of Monument, couldn't actually deliver the water here. And so we invested in our needs of the town such as new wells, new pipelines, new tanks and stuff like that. But we're always looking for water rights that we can grab and get to the town of Monument, especially with either the Loop or the NDS. You know, either one we go, we can purchase water rights that are down south and get them through those pipelines now.
I, I think it's a much easier decision once you have a path to, to get that water into your system, whether it's through Loop or NDS. To me that, those are, those are viable pathways to, to make that happen. But I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with when you go to purchase water rights, you're talking usually millions of dollars. A lot of times you have to, if you don't have it, you have to go out and get, uh, loans to do that. You know, one of the things that, that I remembered is looking at my other notes here. You were asking about, uh, town of Monument's current needs and where we expect to be a build out. Um, as of the latest data we have as of, uh, last year, and we track this every year through charts and, uh, and data sheets, is the town's water system uses our demand basically is about four hundred and twenty acre feet per year. So I think you were close. Yeah, per year. That's what our demand is. Uh, at build out, and again, this is based upon a, a twenty fourteen water master plan. That'll be updated either later this year or first thing next year. And the, the potential developments that we're aware of, there's sometimes, sometimes things pop up that you weren't. And at the town annex is somebody, the question of water always comes up. Do we have the ability? When you look at a project, you always look at, well, what kind of water are they going to need when every last house is built? And we have a general rule of thumb that we count about a half acre foot per house. And then we calculate the numbers and we look at what our capacity is. What do we have online in the next two to three years? And that's how we make a decision about like will serve letters and things. Uh, so right now I projected build out if everything is available land is built and including potential annexation demands on vacant parcels. Uh, we're looking at about between eight hundred to nine hundred acre feet somewhere in that range. So a little less than double our current demand. Uh, we have twelve well, we'll have twelve wells available for production by, most likely by August, July or August of this year, depending on the timing of, uh, when we can get the final permits we need from the state to place those in the service. The construction will be done well before then. It's just a matter of waiting for the, the permission and the paperwork to.
So, so Tom, that, that, um, eight to nine hundred acre feet, is that just for the town of Monument Water District or is that for the whole town of Monument?
That is just the town of Monument's water system.
Okay.
Yes. So it's.
We're not a district. We're actually a service area.
Okay. So, but I mean, our, our system with our wells and not, not counting Triview and not counting.
And that includes all the annexations that we could do.
Okay.
That are not existing. So like if we say we, we annex Woodmore, they already have counted all of that. So we don't have to add that to our system. They're already counted. So if we took over Forest Lakes, they already have water for that area. So this takes into, just like if we did Monument Ridge east or west, if this includes that.
Well, we wouldn't include the east though, right?
No, no, I'm sorry. It wouldn't. Yeah. So that's in Woodmore. So it just do the west.
We, we looked at several areas that we projected would be built out. And, and again, just to give you an idea, in twenty fourteen, we projected our build out in the year twenty thirty-five. Uh, that has probably changed by a few years now, only because there's some annexations, the potential for annexations is there. Uh, depending on, on council action in the future, but even if they, they don't um, turn into an annexation, we at least have to prepare for that demand so that if they come to the council as a, as an annexation, we're in a position to say, yes, uh, we can meet their demand if we'll build out or no, we can't, in which case I would imagine the project would die on its merits anyway.
Tom, how do, how do we, uh, measure up to the surrounding water districts around us such as Triview and Woodmore and maybe even Forest Lakes to where number of, of, uh, meters and stuff like that?
Um, I, I don't have a, I, last time I checked with Triview, they're about double. Back when we were running them, ten years ago, I think we were in a seven hundred acre foot range. They're probably closer to a thousand by now. Uh, but I don't know. Woodmore I know is probably the largest near twenty-three hundred, so.
Wow.
Yeah. So you can see they're much larger than us.
So we're one of the smaller water providers amongst the big three.
Is less than us, but.
Right.
Less homes and less different system altogether. So again, uh, Denala, I can't remember where Denala is. Yeah. Okay. So you kind of see the ratio there. Um, and again, we're at about fourteen hundred and something residential on about a hundred and twenty commercial accounts. And we're going to about four hundred and twenty. So it's almost about a thirdish, maybe a little more, depending on if you have a lot of lawns to irrigate. Uh, we have quite a few in our Santa Fe Trails area, Past Times area. We have a lot of large scale HOAs. Um, that go through a lot of water. And just to give you an idea, it's, it's, um, look at my notes here. Typically during October through April, maybe into May, we average about five and a half to seven million gallons, uh, per month. That's what our demand calls for. But once you get into June, July, August and September, we're, we're ten million gallons on the low end and we've been as high as, uh, twenty-two million gallons. So that's the difference between winter and summer here. It, it's, you can tell our demand is, is almost two and a half times greater for that three or four month period during the summer. And what you're seeing, what's causing that demand is, is irrigation. Irrigation goes away. Uh, we have indoor plumbing only and indoor plumbing doesn't vary very much throughout the year. Unless you just have the additional, if you add a hundred homes, to me that's fifty acre feet of water. Uh, we added probably about a hundred homes last year from Will Springs. We have another probably hundred this year. So our demand will approach five hundred within the next year or two, just based on that subdivision alone. Uh, May and October typically transition months where demand varies depending on weather and seasonal changes. So if you have any questions about where our demand is or what we anticipate is coming up, be more than happy to answer any of those.
Sorry. I do have a, a quick, um, clarification question. So regardless of, of medium that we use to bring our, um, um, our water back up from the Arkansas. Is the intent that at peak months, we're going to use the Loop, the NDS, whichever X, as well as augment from the, the aquifer during the peak months?
I would imagine during the peak months, there'll be a combination of the two. Yes. And then, um,
Like you said, you know, having twelve wells and not using them is not a good strategy. Not at all. So you have to be able to use them.
Really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause you, you don't want to, you, you, I imagine you'll want to rotate and et cetera, et cetera. Okay.
Exactly. And we do a lot, what's, the reason why we drilled, drilled three new wells, we do a lot of maintenance on our wells because of the age of them. And last, the last couple of summers, we found that typically when we have to do that maintenance is exactly when we need more water.
Yeah. Again, the whole, the whole purpose of drilling the three new wells, um, I believe two of them are done. The last one's finishing up. Um, as far as the drilling goes, they still have to be, um, outfitted and power supplies and things like that. That will occur over the next several months. But one of the main purposes there is because our plants, like Mike mentioned, are getting up in age. Uh, maintenance requirements increase. Um, if we typically have two of our larger plants go down due to various issues, it really puts us in a bind to the point where last year we had to call up HOAs and other large suppliers and tell them, can you shut off your water for two weeks, three weeks until we can get our larger plants back online? Uh, so during the off season like now, we're doing a lot of, um, upgrades and, uh, replacing what I call critical assets. Things that if they failed could, could take a plant out of service. Uh, an example is, uh, right down the street here, our well number seven, which is our high pressure plant. Uh, a thing wouldn't thought of, the backwash pumping out. What that means is once the filter has filtered water for sixty hours or whatever it's run, we can't clean them because the waters normally would get pumped and up, uphill to a sewer system. And now we're not able to move that water. And we can't just dump it out the back of the building to the creek, even though it's, it's just water that has, um, you know, higher levels of iron in it, but still it'd be very visible. And we'd get a lot of attention and you'd get a lot of calls and, you know, we try to avoid those type of, uh, things. So anyway, so we're having, uh, the current one rebuilt and we're ordering a brand new one as a backup. Uh, but they're typically five to ten weeks out. So we're trying to get everything ready for end of May, end of June when that demand hits us. Um, so I think overall we do, we do a good job at maintaining what we have. Uh, bigger problem we have right now is staffing. We just now, um, have a couple of new operators going to start in the next month. Uh, but we're down to, to two licensed operators and two of us supervisors that can run things if we have to. So again, looking through my list here, we talked about interconnects, talked about, um, um, leasing, um, keep an eye on a majority of these, uh, new wells and new projects um, are funded out of the two A or the current water bonds that we issued, which is, uh, a good use for that kind of money. But, um, you know, that fund is doing pretty healthy and, uh, we have meetings all the time about what to do for the next few years. The, um, so any more questions related to anything with our system? I know it kind of bounced all over the place, but.
And, and make sure that everybody feels free to do this. If you go through that list of questions, you see anything you need answers on, just send those to me and we'll get those answers back to you on those. Jesse, did you have anything you wanted to add? Jeff? Good. Any more questions?
Questions? Good for now. We can probably, when is the next?
So, um, month from now, it'll be the first meeting in, uh, April. We'll bring Jim and, um,
Jenny Bishop.
Jenny Bishop.
CSU.
Yep. They'll bring in and they'll, they'll provide the aspects of the northern delivery system. Some of these acronyms you may not be familiar with. We use them openly. Uh, NDS means Northern Delivery System. There's also an SDS, which is the Southern Delivery System, which brought water from the Pueblo area up to CSU. Uh, the Northern Delivery System would be from CSU over to Triview. Uh, we have the opportunity as the town of Monument to tie into the Northern Delivery System or the Loop. And, uh, for a long time, we were all working together to try to provide one system. But both entities or one entity at that time, Triview, uh, saw that for them, it really makes a lot of sense to go to the Northern Delivery System. Uh, Councilmember Fiorito sat on that board and knows more about that than probably anybody in this room and can explain that and, uh, the reasons why. But the town of Monument has options probably that Triview didn't have at that time. So.
And I would add, we, the town of Monument are in a unique position to where we can, and I mean this sincerely and honestly, we, we have the option of picking one or we have the option of picking both.
Exactly.
So I, I.
And we've even gone as far as, when you speak to that on both, we've gone as far as there, there's an option to bring the Loop and, and NDS together along one area. And it all is balanced off of whether or not CSU is going to allow us to take water because for Woodmore, they've got the same issue. They have existing homes on the north side of the, uh, divide. So for them, you know, that if we get the ten forty-one permit issue taken care of, who knows where we're going to go from there. So to your point, yes, we, we would love to be able to work together as an entire northern entity. When the mayor's been in these meetings and talked about it, he would love to see all of our districts put together into one. And, you know, service all of our customers as one district. And I think that's where as town manager, I would love to go to is that we get everybody at the table and start working together more.
Well, yeah. Okay. Um, thank you. If there's any questions that you.
Thank you for coming with me. I apologize for the like ten page. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, that's what we're here for.
The question, well, if you have any more questions, route them to, uh, Mr. Foreman. We'll then pass it on to the players and the authority, the water authority, and they can come back and in the meantime, we are going to take a recess until the, uh, regular town meeting begins.
I could say just one quick thing.
No.
Step away.
I have recess.
Go ahead, please. Um, I, I would extend an offer to especially the, uh, new council members that if you'd like to take a tour of any of our facilities, a public works facility, I would highly encourage you to do that because that's kind of my, that I need to build that so I can retire.
Sure. And so. Uh, you should do the dunk tank at the radium removal, the radium removal treatment plant, right?
But yeah, all of our treatment plants, uh, show you the new radium removal system that's operating like a champ. I mean, but any of those, just, uh, let Mike know so you can let me know and we'll set up a time. I'm user available any day for that.